Welcome to the March 6th, me, the Goshen Common Council. We have troop five of the Boy Scouts with us tonight, so I've asked Jack to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, so please rise. Thank you. They're here tonight to watch a public meeting, so let's all be nice. And I'm working on one of their merit badges, so, and I know the troop needs to leave early, so whenever that time is right, feel free to take off. We don't have any minutes in, I'm sorry, will the clerk treasurer, please call the roll?
Counselor Icorn.
Here.
Counselor King.
Here.
Counselor Nistley.
Here.
Counselor Perez.
Here.
Counselor Rexhicker.
Here.
Counselor Schrock.
Here.
Council President Weddle.
Here.
Youth Advisor Velazquez Valdez.
Here.
Thank you. And we do not have any minutes in front of us this evening, so that brings us to approval of our agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda or a motion to approve as submitted?
Second.
Motion by Nistley and second by King. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, our agenda is approved. Thank you. First item on the agenda tonight is privilege of the floor. Does anybody in the audience have anything they'd like to speak on that is not on our agenda? Glenn.
Glenn, all, Goshen, I'll sugar today. Know what I'm talking about. Friday was not a good day if you were out on the roads. I was out all by Jefferson Place, got out of the subdivision barely, and got on County Road 18 and scraped the bottom of my car, wife's car, all the way to 15, and then proceeded to scrape all the way till I hit Goshen. Bear pavement, sidewalks were cleared. Really, I appreciate it. I did see the mayor and some of the guys from the street department at a restaurant Saturday morning. I come over and thanked them, thanked the mayor for all the effort to do that. This morning, I was at the commissioners' meeting, and I proceeded to let them know that I didn't think the county was doing a good job plowing and the state either. Later, I found out, which I did not know, which surprises me. The county does almost all of the state's plowing, which means that, you know, I guess if the road isn't cleared, call the county commissioners, because they're the ones to do that. I do appreciate the fact that the city responded in a timely manner and did an excellent job. You know, we've been lucky this winter, and I'm glad that we haven't had to have a lot of overtime for that or salt. So I do appreciate that as a citizen and as a taxpayer.
Thank you. So anybody else who wishes to speak during privilege of the floor? Okay, not seen anyone else. We'll close privilege of the floor, and we'll move into our first item, which is a council discussion here. Turn it over to Dustin Staylor, our Director of Public Works. We, and we have a couple of fiber companies here that we wanted to kind of help explain to everybody what the city has to do with all these projects and how we work together and how, and where we have authority and where we don't, but also just to make sure everybody's aware of what's going on in Goshen with the fiber and why.
So just put a couple of quick things at the request of some elected officials based upon comments that have been received here at this meeting and private sessions, that there's been concerns about activity within the right of way. And so tonight, we've invited both Surf and Frontier. They are the two most active utility companies in our right of way right now. But there's a lot, I just want to make it clear tonight, there's a lot of different utility companies and a lot of different groups that work in the public right of way. So we're not specifically picking them out, but I do have some pictures tonight just to demonstrate kind of what we see as a response of complaints from residents and other people.
For the right corner, Sharon, on that little screen, you could get it from the bottom. We hit a five? Okay.
Dustin, while she's searching for that, you mentioned there's other utilities that also utilize, could you just kind of, I know you can't give me a comprehensive list, but.
Yeah, so NipSCO has both gas and electric. We have Comcast, New Paris. There's some other fiber companies that we're not aware of that really has a home base around here. I know we dealt with some in Chicago west. I mean, a lot of companies will run from a line off of the railroad tracks to one of the cell towers to have access. So they're not quite as extensive as what Surf and Frontier are putting in, as well as New Paris.
Thank you.
Yep.
Just trying to fill the airways a little bit.
Sure. Sharon, I could just work off the smaller ones, may not be as.
While we're continuing to work on this too, I would say to everybody, because there's been a lot of confusion with some of the neighborhoods too, but we are excited that we do have fiber companies interested in installing in Goshen, because that's something that all communities are looking to expand into. So it's, it's a really good thing that we've got these companies so interested in working so hard in Goshen. But we also got to take today just to kind of address some other, other pieces of this that we keep hearing from the public as well.
Sure, if you get it, I'm gonna just get started here. So one of the big things with right of way permitting, our ordinance is 3659, and it's the ordinance setting forth requirements for a right of way cut in the city of Goshen. And so that ordinance dates back to 1996 and has not been updated since. The general components of that is that if you're working within the public right of way, you need to request a permit. The fee is $20 for the first 100 feet, and then $15 for each additional 100 feet. Utility bond of 5,000 is required. If you have a large area, you're able to take one $5,000 bond. So we have a lot of contractors that do a lot of work within the right of way, and so they usually pull one $5,000 bond and have it on file for the entire year. Permits are good for three months. And you know, the big thing that we get at the Goshen Engineering Department is, why aren't you guys managing all the activity in the right of way better? I think the big thing for Goshen Engineering is, is we have one person in engineering tech that has a lot of other duties, and so he, in his free time, goes out and kind of drives through to watch some of these. And that's, that's for the utility permits, and then for the driveway and sidewalk permits, because we've had so many issues with ADA. We spend quite a bit more time with that. So we do a pre-pore with the contractor, just to make sure that they're meeting ADA slopes, and then we do a post-pore, because there's always some variation between the pre-pore and the post-pore, just to make sure we're still meeting ADA. So most of the time for field inspections is spent on sidewalks and driveways. So the next one here, I just kind of want to show, and this is maybe a little bit difficult to see, but the lower right-hand picture, we've had numerous complaints about this, and we've also observed it, and that is a utility truck, a trailer parked on one of our bike paths. And that, just so you guys are aware, our bike paths are only four inches thick. They are not set up for vehicles, especially once you start putting heavy equipment on them. So that, that's one of the complaints we get with regard to utility companies out in the, working in the right of way. The picture on the right-hand side is every time the utility company is putting a conduit underground, and especially with the directional boring companies, they have to pothole at every utility crossing. So there's a, say a water service or a gas service, and they're going to cross it perpendicular. They have to pothole down to it to put eyes on it. And so this happened to be in the pavement. Not a big deal with regard to this. The big issue is, is they left the holes unfilled. So it's right near a crosswalk. And so now we have two six-inch holes, there's a set there, and there's a set just further back in the picture of potholing that were not filled appropriately afterwards. Wintertime is a really difficult time for restoration with snow and everything else that's going on. The utility companies have been trying to work during the winter months. So that is one of the most frequent comments we get from residents is, you know, utility company's been through, my yard is a total mess. The picture on the right just kind of shows where a utility handhole has been put in, and there is like a sand backfill, and then there's nothing on top of it, no straw, anything. You can see there's some snow on there, so I don't know what the time of installation, there was snow on the ground, but that may stay there a while. The other picture on the right, and that, that's for me, is one that was just brought to my attention, but that, that utility box is right behind the curb line. We don't even put fire hydrants that close to the back of curb line. Usually, we're a foot to a foot and a half off the back curb. So that one was an interesting one that was presented to me just today. This one here, the picture on the right-hand side is a new handhole for a utility, and then it's kind of hard to see, and I don't know if I have a laser on here or not. But right there is a water curb stop, and so that box comes right up to the edge of that. And so somehow, if that water service ever has a leak someday, we've got to try to work around a utility handhole. And we're, they're, you know, 24 to 36 inches deep, we're five feet deep. So that one's going to be a challenge someday. Here on the right-hand side is a handhole that was put in, and then you can see the backfill, but it wasn't packed very well. And so right along the edge of pavement, it is settled, you know, six to eight inches. And so I, you know, this is one of the things that, you know, when we are out looking and finding those, we're trying to get a hold of the installer and say, hey, you got to come back out and at least get that filled from a safety perspective. This is another one. Again, they came out of the box, just kind of lightly filled the trench with sand. So again, that's what we see from a lot of customers that will call us and say, hey, you're not protecting us in our yard, because we got a sand mess, and I had a beautiful yard out there. This one here was a recent presentation to us. I've never had this one, where they had a utility line that was broke, and they had to get service across the street. So they went ahead, bored underneath the sidewalk, and then ran the line into the city storm sewer, out to the other side, came back up to provide service to the other side of the road. That was, that was a new one. So one of the things with directional drilling, you know, there's two different ways to do that. With smaller pipes, you can do dry boring, and then you can also do wet boring, which they put a bentonite clay in with that board gel. It's called a board gel. In this particular case, they had so much pressure in their system that they, it was running down the street, and right here is a catch basin. And you can see that was going into the city storm sewer. Unfortunately, in Clover Trails, the big issue in there is that storm system goes out into a storm pipe that is buried in the swale. And so even utilities doesn't really have good access to try to clean that out. So, and once we can get that fluid out of that catch basin before it goes into the storm system, it's going to end up into that sanitary system or storm system in the swale. And the only way really for us to repair that is to dig it out, that being the pipe and everything, and replacing it. Yeah, it's, it's to help. So, so anybody's familiar with directional drilling, they push a rod through, they have a, I'll call it duck bill in the end, it kind of helps them direct where it's going, and they bring an auger back. And so that auger kind of creates a nice slurry mud in there and kind of seals everything up around that bentonite. Well, we use bentonite to, yep, bentonite's good for that to clay and for sealing off wells, so it makes a good barrier. And we've had numerous utility hits that we're aware of. It's been, one thing, it's been a nice cooperative with NipSCO, is that they have been within the city televising the sanitary sewer, but then also the sewer laterals. We've seen the benefit from that, so that, that's why the Goshen Utilities actually just purchased a sewer lateral launch, so we're able to go open the sewer laterals. But NipSCO has spent probably the last year and a half in Goshen televising. So honestly, without their assistance, we wouldn't know that a lot of our utility lines have been hit. This particular one, Colonial Farms, was identified because the road started sinking, and then the fiber line went right through the top of the pipe, so you can see, I guess, is as close as it is, when the auger came back through, it just chewed the top of the pipe out. This is just a quick map. So what we know of right now, we have 64 identified utility hits. Some of those have been repaired. Just kind of gives you. No, this has been about two years now.
Is this typical?
Well, so, you know, some people ask, I saw on Facebook, you know, why did you invite Surf and Frontier? Surf and Frontier are these two boxes over here. So as far as hits, and this, this box right here represents about 18 known hits associated with that, that one. And then we're, you know, about nine with that one. And then these other two right here are NipSCO-related utility hits. And then there's some red ones on the map. We don't have those identified. Those are still to be determined what utility they belong to. So it's just a quick presentation, kind of to relate and maybe provide some credence to what customers are saying out there. And again, from Goshen Utilities' perspective and Goshen Engineering's perspective, the ordinance right now does not have much associated with it. It basically identifies, you know, permits are supposed to come in, be requested, permits are supposed to be provided, and then only if things get really bad is there a stop work order allowed in that ordinance.
That ordinance reflects state statute to the best of our knowledge at this time, right?
I'm going to turn that over to Bodhi to.
General answer to that is yes. And just for some background, generally, a public utility has the right to be in the right of way. Municipalities, including the city, have some ability to quote, manage the right of way. That's not well-defined. It's in an ordinance or in a statute that was first written in 1913, amended a couple of times since, but it's not really written to address what's happening today. Any appeal? If, if we would try to put too many conditions in the ordinance, too many conditions on a public utility, the public utility could appeal to the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission for administrative proceeding, so. I guess the thing about that is, we don't see court cases interpreting what the statute says, so we can't give a good idea of what's a reasonable condition to place in the right of way. Dustin mentioned a fee for the permits. We're limited again on what we can charge. We can't charge a rent or a royalty fee for the occupation of the right of way. We have some ability to place other charges, and Dustin and I have talked about looking at our ordinance and making some revisions to reflect the amount of time that our staff is going out there and trying to recoup some of those charges.
So maybe one other thing I want to touch on, and we talked about right of way so far. The other thing that we get comments and questions about in Goshen Engineering is easements. And so Goshen Engineering does not permit any activity in easements. And when subdivisions were established, those easements were prepared as part of that, and as each property owner purchased those properties, they accepted the encumbrance on that property by those easements. And so we do not, we do not get involved at all with utilities being placed in utility easements.
So permits are not required, or are permits required through that easement?
No permits are required from Goshen Engineering. And our ordinance only deals with right of.
Right of way.
Yes, and pretty much those are when it gets really bad. We had one recently.
Can you repeat the question? I apologize.
Yeah, so the.
What constitutes really bad?
Okay.
So we recently had one that they went in, they potholed, and so they could identify all the utilities in the right of way. They put boards over the holes for overnight. They put caution tape around, and so from an ADA perspective, around the sidewalk areas, and so from an ADA perspective, that is not proper traffic control for pedestrians. You know, so if they have a stick or something, they're not going to notice that they got tangled in a spider web of caution tape. So those are the kind of instances that we will reach out to them definitely and say, if this is not cleaned up, this is going to be justification for a stop work order.
But in this, in this current ordinance we have, it does say that the stop order can happen if there's any violation of what we have.
Right, and so there's nothing in there that talks about what a violation is. So working without a permit within the right of way, that would be justification for a stop work order. The other is more of a federal thing with ADA, but there's nothing in there to interpret well what is a violation.
Dustin, can you define right of way? I forget if it measures from the center of the road or from the curb line, and about how far it goes.
It varies throughout the entire city. And so with the original Platts is where the right of way is established in a lot of the areas. Some of the areas that we annex from the county, they would have, property lines may go out to the center line of the road, and they'll be established right of ways that say, okay, it's 40 feet. Is it a clear right of way? It's not a, let's see, trying to figure out how to say this, but it's not an owned, but it's the right to use?
Right. Generally, in the county, the owners, the property owners own to the center of the road, and then there's 20 feet on either side for right of way. And I think that's generally considered, quote, public right of way for utility purposes.
Correct. So in the, in the city, say Colonial Farms or whatever, are we talking like?
50 feet, so about 25 feet half either side of the center line. Downtown, you're looking more at like 82 feet is the right of way in the downtown area.
As long as they're working in that 25 feet from the center of the road, they can be in your yard pretty much doing what they want?
Correct. And, you know, you make a good point. So a lot of the newer subdivisions, the sidewalk is pretty well towards the back of the right of way. Usually, it's about a one-foot separation to the sidewalk in the back of right of way. We have had customers that contact and say, hey, we've got utility companies there all the way up in my property. And from that perspective, again, it's not within the right of way. It's not something that Goshen Engineering feels like they can go out and force.
Sidewalk in the right of way, you said?
Sidewalk is in the right of way, and some customers have contacted, said, hey, the directional boring company is boring beyond that. They believe so. We have not gone out and evaluated that. There's been a couple that we've kind of looked at. Yeah, they're probably pushing the edges of where they're at.
Can council members, please, remember to speak directly into the microphone?
You're talking about the pothole. Yeah. Typically, we would prefer that the sidewalk not be, or that if they do that, that they pop the entire panel. Try and, it's like an uphill battle trying to take care of sidewalk and ADA. So any, you know, additional holes in that is a problem for us. I do want to comment though, too, it's not always the case that kind of right of way is private. A lot of the new subdivisions now, too, we're trying to put utilities that's behind the right of way. So it really depends case by case basis, because right of ways, you know, say the 50 feet are quickly being filled by, you know, water, sewer, gas, electric, multiple communication companies. And so that's why we're just finding out that we've got to go beyond.
Say, my personal subdivision, there's an easement, utility easement in the backyard of common areas, and I mean, they literally earlier this year, probably 10 feet off of most of our back patios, but it was again, the easement. So they had every right, and, and again, they don't need to pull permits, because it's a utility easement. And so of course, my neighbors were not happy and contacted me and kind of explained that process too.
I apologize. Just so everybody knows, we're having trouble with our audio system for some reason with the speaker, so I apologize for that. We tried to turn up the volume, but that hum started. So if anybody who's talking, project your voice for us, that'd help a lot, please.
So the other thing I want to just comment, we're going to let communication companies have a chance to speak as well. I just want to let you know that they have a lot of companies that they're working with in the right of way, and so from my understanding, they confirm this, that they're subbing the workout. There's some that are very good, and there's some challenge for us and probably for them as well. I just want to make sure people understand it's not that we're ignoring their concerns and comments from Goshen Engineering. It really is a perspective that we feel like that we have some limitations associated with what we can and can't do, especially considered, you know, what we put in specifications for a public works project. We can be very detailed with working with the private utilities in the right of way.
Yeah, I'll let you have that conversation with them. We do, they have given us the phone numbers for construction managers. And we've had kind of pre kickoff meetings with utility companies, just to make sure we're kind of hopefully on the same page. But maybe I'll just kind of wrap this all up with one last thing. And so I mentioned earlier that engineering has one engineering tech that spends some time on this. There's just a new position in Goshen through the street department that has been assigned, and that person will be doing more of the right of way. So they'll have more time to focus on concerns that may be out there with right of ways. Just made that change.
Maybe two things. So the city pretty much can't deny a permit if somebody comes to work in the right of way for utility.
Unless they're asking to, yeah, I I think as long as they're going to rebuild the corridor the preexisting condition, I don't think there is anything that we can do to say no.
Right. And and most of them aren't going to say, we're not going to put it back the way it was. But and then homeowners associations really have no damage either, correct?
You know, what I've seen is they're working within these utilities. And so they have the full right to be within this.
Trying to think of my neighborhood, if our plot Farmer Village, the condos back there by Black Squirrel. I think we have a plot map, if I remember right, that would show that this is just my neighborhood, not any others specifically, but that would show that easement, I think.
If it's okay with council members, maybe we can have the the companies give their presentations. I might answer some of these questions. And then we can have more more council discussion, obviously. And we do have Gene Cruzy here with Surf bring you up first. I believe we have representatives to from Frontier as well. Sorry, apologize. I haven't met you yet or don't know your names. But I do want to reiterate, we are glad that that these companies are helping keep our community on the cutting edge of of communications. And so tonight was really about bringing them so they can share what we're doing, also address some of these concerns that we've been hearing and dealing with for a little over a year and a half now to help better educate the public about what everything's going on. And we want to, end of the day, we want to be good partners to the communication companies. We just want to also be reassured that that partnership goes both ways. And Gene, you're, you've been here in town for a while and appreciate you being willing to come and talk with us tonight.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, hey, everybody. Good evening. My name is Gene Cruzy. I'm the CEO of Surf. And if you don't know, I live in Elkhart County, and my business started on downtown Main Street here in Goshen, next to the theater. So Goshen is home. It's kind of like homecoming, coming here and seeing all of you. I just put together a quick packet. I want to introduce Pat McCauley, who's our fiber implementation manager. And so Surf has been growing like crazy. As you might know, we have about 73,000 households that we provide fiber to across Indiana, Michigan, and Illinois. We're based in Elkhart, but we have lots of team members that live here in Goshen. There's a couple of them here tonight. We've passed about 6,000 households in Goshen. And if you look at this slideshow that I put together, the third slide in is really what I wanted to to talk about. And we're basically done with our construction in Goshen, and we have been since 2021. Yep. Sorry. Hey, Megan, how you doing? I work for a technology company, but I don't know how to use. Dustin said the bar pretty high, though. Okay. All right, here we go. Yeah, there you go. Yep, thank you. So that's the fiber map. You really can't see it. The the green areas, and that's why I printed it out for you all. So it's on the second page right now. The green areas are the areas that we intend to expand into. And so you'll know them as Terrace Park, which is over by the fairgrounds. We were invited in there by the residents. We we were basically done building in Goshen, and the resident said, we want your fiber there, bring it to us. So we would like to do that. We have a permit application in. The other one is the, I call it the Gray Roy area behind Gray Roy area behind Goshen Hospital. Marshall's here and Marshall put together a petition of the neighbors, and he got 17 or 20 of the 27 houses there that said they want Surf to bring fiber. And so outside of that, we're pretty much done in Goshen, and we haven't done any construction in the city of Goshen since 2021, other than we're building some fiber for green croft. And let's see if the clicker works now. Look at that. So there it is. So there the the green is everything that's done in 2021. The red is what we did in 2022, which is just green croft and an area out in the county that's not inside the city. And then there's just a couple little blue areas on this map that are the areas that we would like to build in 2023. Again, Terrace Park, Gray Roy. And then a little area that's actually outside of Goshen on Wildon Avenue. Here's the two that we talked about on the right is the petition from Marshall and his neighbors to bring us into historic Racemere Peninsula and Gray Roy. And we're also really excited to partner with La Casa. We have a MOU or memorandum of understanding with La Casa where we'll provide free internet to the residents that are in some of their housing units. So I bring that up because they they've asked us to bring fiber to 409 East Madison. And we're going to lease fiber from Elkhart County Fiber to provide a connection there. So La Casa residents that are moving into that newly renovated house can get access to internet. So the last thing here is this last slide, and I don't want to take a lot of time, but I heard one of the council members ask how we engage with the community. So we have a page. It's called construction.surfinternet.com. You can track where our construction is active. And if a resident has an issue, they can log a complaint there. And then Pat and his team of construction managers will address that quickly. But as I mentioned, we really haven't built anything in Goshen in over a year. So it's been pretty quiet. And so that's my presentation. I'm just here to answer any questions. And we'd really like to get started in those couple of neighborhoods that we have queued up. Yeah, let me ask, Pat, do you have a sense of how many lengths we'd have?
Could we, could we have you come to the microphone for the recording? Sorry.
And if you could give your name, please?
Pat McCauley. It'd be a hard, it'd be hard to put a number on. I can tell you that just kind of anecdotally, it was maybe a couple of weeks while we were, we had, you know, five or six drills going in the in the city. But no, I don't have, I don't have that number off the top of my head. Absolutely. Yeah, we I could, I could get it. I just don't have it off the top of my head. Absolutely. Yeah.
100% of our infrastructure is underground. And so there's going to be some more issues related to, we can't find a gas line, we can't find a water line. But we knew that the city wanted most everything to be underground in case in the future they want to remove the aerial stuff. So that was probably why you see a little bit more noise in 2020 and 2021 is because we were doing everything underground. We didn't have the option to go aerial. That's right. Yeah, we have a very, very extensive process. Every homeowner is touched at least seven times during the construction process, including a door hanger, including a postcard, a construction letter that has a QR code. They can go to our website so they know what's going on. We have multiple videos that we send. Like, we really do try to educate the community, let them know what's going on. Things like, we're in the right of way. We get it all the time. Hey, you're trespassing. Well, we already talked about, oh, we need to go again. But we try to educate the the homeowners about that. Also, Dustin mentioned the slurry that's involved in the drilling. We get a lot of people that are freaking out about us hitting something, but it's really just the materials that the drill uses. But we're really conscious about cleaning up after ourselves. Now, just like Dustin said, we've had a few contractors that weren't the best, and they're no longer here. So we move them out.
Dustin, curious. The presentation had some some graphs up there. And so you had listed those little tall bar.
That was us. We'll take it. Yeah, that was us. That was prior to 2022. And I would attribute that to the fact that it was 100% underground. Yeah, and there was, it was just a large amount of construction in a very short amount of time. We did 6,000 houses in Goshen in one year. When you're doing construction, you can either go slow and take a lot of people over off over a long period of time, or you can rip the bandaid off. And we worked with the city to find a nice medium in terms of what capacity Dustin and his team had to handle with permits. We tried to balance that pretty well.
I'm Casper Harris.
So are you asking what active permits we have or? See them?
That would take a considerable amount of time for our staff on top of what we're already spending, unfortunately, unless we can find a good system. Are there any other questions from council members for Surf?
Good to see you all.
Thank you. I'd like to invite the Frontier representatives up. And if you would, state your name for the the record and, you know, look forward to hearing from you.
Hello, my name is Michael O'Keefe, Fort Wayne, Indiana. I'm the Vice President of External Affairs for Frontier Communications. I'm here. Been in the industry for 35 years. But I've been, but I've been around the fiber product for probably the last 17 years. I was a Vice President of Operations for GTE back in the day. And then Verizon bought those territories or became Verizon. Vice President of Operations for Verizon for these areas, Indiana, Midwest, Dallas, or Florida and Texas. And and then with Frontier, same position, and then moving to this role fairly recently. So we are building. I don't have a presentation to share. I do have information that we'll get to. But this is a yard sign that we put in at the beginning of subdivisions and periodically through subdivisions, letting customers know that we're coming and some contact information. More specific than that, we use door hangers that go on every single door for customers, whether we're going to be working behind the houses and easements or, you know, outside, out front, doing some directional boring. These brochures, we recently changed because they they had the contractor's number to call if you had a damage or complaint. And we said, well, I mean, that's kind of like the fox watching hen house. So we have recently switched nationally where this is a local number for your citizens to call. And it's logged in by a frontier complaint team. So we've created an interior, interior frontier complaint team where we can log, track, know exactly which crews are causing damage, how many damages per month, and then work back with our contractors to make sure they clean up their their efforts. Yeah, this also is really pretty cool because it has a URL on it and a QR code that if you scan it or go to that URL, it explains to the customer, it pulls up a presentation by Frontier about construction, whether it's aerial, buried. It runs the the customer through what they can expect to happen in their yard. If they see paint in their yard, they can go to the site, and it tells them what the next steps are, what they can expect. So it's an overall educational tool for the customer. So we are building about 13,500 households, which is more than the city of Goshen. So we go outside of Goshen, a little bit into the county. But our plan is to cover 100% of the households in in Goshen. Now, there are what are called MDUs, multi dwelling units, where you have to go in and negotiate a specific contract with those to provide services. So those are not counted in those numbers. And this product will be available for residential and business customers. Very, very fast speeds. It's based off the network that we inherited from Verizon that was rolled out in Fort Wayne, you may be aware of. But it's been upgraded. The equipment's smaller, the equipment's more reliable, the equipment's faster and easier to upgrade. It's really, really great product. So we're, we're rolling this out across our entire footprint in the in the United States. And through Ohio, through Michigan, through Indiana, right now, we've got builds going on everywhere. Now, the good news is, as Surf mentioned, they were 100% buried. We're 60% buried. So our our build follows our existing footprint. So we have, we're the incumbent local exchange telecom company. So we already have easements. We already have we already have engineering prints where we know where those easements are. We wheel those easements out when we go out to place our fiber. And and we're also able to use our aerial facility. So we're overlapping our cable to our existing copper cables. So there's no intrusion to yards. There's no tearing up of 40% of all of the households in in Goshen. We're not going to have to touch a yard. We also use our underground system, which gets us from our central office point where the electronic equipment is out to a, you know, point a little bit away from that, which typically is your downtown interior areas. So we're not having to core bore and and possibly hit some mainline utilities because we already have conduits and duct system running from our central offices. So we have some advantages from an incumbent telecom that we're not creating as as many problems. Now, we started our work last year in August. We haven't been in the market that long. We started pretty slow. And by the way, with me today, Todd Payne, he is our Indiana Construction Fiber really supervisor. He he runs and manages all the contractors across Indiana, making sure they have to do quality work. Mike Mc, Mike McFadden, who is President of TCS, who is the vendor we're using in this community. Mike flew in from Denver to join us today. And then Nate and and Nate is really the closest, he works for a cattle court. He is closest to Goshen. He works daily or sends in the daily worksheets to let the engineering department know where we're going to be working, what job they're on, what type of work we're doing, whether it's aerial or buried. So he works very, very closely. Any issues go to Todd or Nate. And we have a goal to get with, you know, get them resolved within 24 hours, 48 hours. So good news is on those pictures that were presented earlier, I think only maybe three, maybe four. We were talking over there, we're related to our build. Some of that stuff is a hangover from the prior build. And and again, we've got with TCS, they have a three man crew that's dedicated to restoration. So after the job's done, they go back, the supervisor goes back and and reviews the buried path that we followed to make sure, you know, maybe the perfect know, to make sure everything's taken care of. We had recent issue as was presented in a couple of the pictures in one of the subdivisions. I think it was Clover Trails where there was some settlements and rutting. And so they had to go back and they fixed it within 48 hours. Some of that, some of those issues. So hopefully, again, we want to make sure that customers are aware we're out there, that they can depend on us to respond. And we're going to, we're going to also, hopefully, if you're getting calls in the city and they call us, you guys call us, we're going to log those complaints, too, because I think we're missing that. We're missing that, that complaint tracking. But But the recovery in the whole city, very, very fast speeds. You know, we've been a provider in, in Goshen through GT, through Frontier, through Frontier for 70 years. So we've got some cables that are that old in our ducts. And it was time to replace our, our copper network everywhere. This is not, not, it's not different from any of the other communities that we serve. It was time to replace our, our copper cable with a very, very fast. And what we think your consumers will find is tremendous back. When you look at the speed versus price, customers are going to find that Frontier is a good place to lay it. So let me talk real quick about, okay, we talked about the restoration crew. We're really not aware of any out-of-easement issues that was brought up. Out of right-of-way issue. There are some cases where the right-of-way is small, they may have to back up the equipment a little bit further to be able to access and bore from the right-of-way. That may be, you know, where some of that's coming from. But we have very comprehensive work rules, work standards for our construction teams. Those have been communicated to the engineering department, so they've been shared with the city. And anybody, we had a couple crews, I would, you know, just like Surf did. We had a couple crews that weren't meeting our standards when we started back August, September, and we exited pretty quickly. So hopefully, and many of the crews, I believe, are locally employed, right? So we're trying to keep, you know, them on the up and up. And we also have a dedicated inspector right now that covers Elkhart, Goshen. And we're hiring a second inspector. His job for Frontier is just to go make sure that the vendors are doing that. Because, as you mentioned, you just have a part-time person out there trying to, trying to keep up with it. We don't want you guys to take the calls, we don't want you guys to, to take the complaints. So I think I covered our goal. Anybody that's ever done home restoration, you know, construction's messy, right? It's as good as you try to, you know, make, make changes to, to make it, the dust not go into your living room, you know, if you're getting your kitchen redone, it's going to go in there. So we, we just need to minimize it. And we want to do everything we can to make sure the citizens of, of Goshen and you folks are getting a quality product and quality construction.
Same question that I would have asked Surf in terms of tracking the data for complaints. And I don't know if I've heard you correctly, you don't have that right now, or?
We started, if you go back before February, we don't have good tracking. But I pull, I had the log pulled before I came tonight. We had three complaints registered for February. One was not really an issue, it was not our issue when we went out and investigated. Two of them were in need of care. One, we've got to follow up, the customer said, we'll get back when it's not so wet. You know, things grab a little bit, we'll get back to that customer. Right now, but I think we'll miss him soon, like I said. So I think you guys are taking some calls and just going to, you guys are going to get those logged too. It's not, not a huge amount. I've had some construction at my house recently, and actually, we're done, and there's been a lot of stuff over the last month or two. So yeah, you have to go back to your point, you have to go back, you can't just walk away. But yeah, we are very excited about the, the product. And matter of fact, I mean, I do a presentation to, to cities. Unfortunately, I was put in this position after we had already started to build here. If the officer was interested, I could come and do the full presentation. It adds the maps and our product.
Thank you. And, you know, we appreciate anything that companies can do and your subcontractors to help us stay ahead of, of these issues. Because for the city of Goshen, it is significant, the number of complaints we're getting, which is why we set up this, this meeting, but we do appreciate it. I do have a quick question before we go to the public. The fiber install supervisors, we have two companies here, is there some prerequisite that you guys have to have these glorious, awesome beards? Or? Um, the council talked earlier today, or before we started tonight, and wanted to do public input tonight. And we're going to start with just 20 minutes of public input time, asking each speaker to, to cap it at two minutes. Brett, Council President Waddell will keep track of the two minutes for you. If, if there's something that hasn't come up already, please come up and share. If somebody comes up and shares an issue or something they're positive about, and that was what, same thing you were going to say, please respect that it's already been said, so that more people, more of those topics can come out. And just as a reminder too, at our council meetings, we work hard to make sure that we're not demeaning anybody when we're speaking. We can talk about issues, but we don't have to get negative about them. And just a reminder that you're addressing the council and just letting us know what your thoughts are. And we can help be that advocate to, to be that path like we have to work with the companies to get things better. Did I miss anything, Council President?
Please print your name.
Yes, yeah, we have a sign-up sheet up here and print your name, just so we make sure we get it spelled correctly in the minutes, if you would.
And I won't start the time until you're ready to go, and I'll probably point it either Councilman Nissler or Councilman Icorn, and they can tap at you when it's time to wrap it up.
And council members, I did since we're capping it at 20 minutes, I'd suggest we not ask questions to the, the speakers so that we can get through as many speakers as possible. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak? Yes, Pamela. But you would have a choice depending on if those companies have laid their fiber in front of your house. So if, well, both companies go through, then you would be able to pick which company you want for your service. Yeah. Sir. And we do apologize for the system tonight.
Hi, my name is Jeremy McGregor, and I'm with Eastpoint. And board member, board president for the last three years. I grew, I'm very good. Delivery was good. Service, pretty good. Service itself, lots of compliments. That's not the reason I'm here today. I'm here today because I think there's a glitch in the planning. And so far is that we just got a plan from them, that they're going to go belay and fiber in our community. Now, there's the main primary assumption about their plan is that they have public access. Couple of HOAs. We have one, Eastpoint has one public. Targeted. I think that's. We'd like to be able to dialogue with Verizon on the rest. So the, I was looking at the, I was just playing with the fence. Off the top. Fires down into the hole.
Okay, thank you.
David Doherty in Goshen, and I live in the Village of Park Meadows. And we've had four fiber companies come through now. And with varying degrees of efficiency. My thing was, was that New Paris put theirs in behind the lots, behind the houses. That went real, real nice. Two newest ones, they're a little bit different because they both came through the front, they came about the same time of the year during the winter. That was sort of fun to watch them do that. But the issue this year was really just the cleanup after, and our sidewalks were nothing but mud. Rapped the whole neighborhood for the most part on the side where they really worked a lot. And the other thing is too, on, on the, the cleanup is that the crews sort of left food in the yards. They're eating and just throw their food in the yard. So you just need to watch, supervise so that doesn't happen. A lot of dirt's been washed away, and they have come back once, but it's another rain, another washway. People are in there, but average 80 years old. When you've got ruts in yards and you have 80-year-olds walking around, one fall would be the last fall they ever have. It needs to be taken care of immediately, not later. And yet, one other thing is the issue, the ground caps on the, on the ground installments. When the commercial mowers run over those, they break. I've had a cone on one for probably a month. We called several times and no, no response. That was a surf issue, Gene. So we need to make sure that gets fixed, barrels destroyed, not just the cap of the barrel. So when you install those caps, it needs to be able to have spring.
Sir. All right, Marshall, I'll have you next. You're, you're there.
Just several comments. I know we have New Paris phone quality cable vision in our backyards where we get our internet and so forth. And I know that when I was city engineer, that they declared a certain service area besides Frontier. I don't know if that's legally there anymore or not. Already, we have new, one new cable, and of course, we were out of service for 17 days from that. And one more cable share and a new buried conduit is one question I have. We only have one phone service, Frontier. Can we limit cable to 10G or new 10, or new 10G on the same service of 5G and cell phones? The questions I have. Just my comments that.
Thank you.
No, three, two, three, three more.
Marshall, thank you.
My name is Marshall King. I live at 605 Grayroy Drive. I'm the President of the Historic Racemere Neighborhood Association, also known as the Best Damn Neighborhood Association. I, in full disclosure, have done some freelance work over the years, helping Gene and his company communicate. As far as I know, there weren't complaints about that work. But I, I'm here on behalf of our neighborhood. We did ask Surf Wireless to offer fiber internet service in our neighborhood. It wasn't a highly formal process. It started because some of the neighborhood folks got excited when they saw a roll of fiber sitting adjacent to our neighborhood. So this is the modern era where we want this fast internet service. I appreciate all of you and the mayor taking time tonight to talk about this issue that we're not really going to solve in terms of competition, whether multiple companies can go through the same area to, to offer the same service. But I'm grateful because these two companies that are on the forefront of this right now have heard tonight about the importance of good installation, caring for those issues, and having some recourse for homeowners who are upset that they're, the lawn that they mow, which happens to be an easement, has now somehow been damaged. So if they choose to go into the same neighborhoods and be competitive on that front, how they have done customer service will be the hallmark of whether customers choose to go with them. And I think tonight's meeting is a bit an important part of that. So thank you for that. And we, this is a nice problem for Goshen to have, as you've said several times tonight. And I, I'm not personally that worried about the installation because I survived having 150-foot utility tower put in my yard, which I didn't want because it was from a company from whom I don't get electricity. But we're grateful that, that the service is coming to our neighborhood, starting with Surf. And if Frontier chooses to come, our neighbors will have questions and hold them to a high standard in terms of the installation as well.
Thank you.
I live on Dewey. Walk Dewey. Right-hand side from five points, Turkey. What you see is a lot of, we'll call it cable, in my mind, it's cable. Coming out of that little box by the street, literally almost on the street, running over, and hopefully, you know, they, on my property, they actually drilled under the sidewalk, my sidewalk. And then to the neighbor's house, they ran this cable. Problem is, I could pick that cable up, it will be about waist-high. That's how much slack is in there. Now, somebody, one of the kids run from school and will go home and get off the sidewalk and trip on that, it gets sued. I do. That's my property. And when they did install the box, I ended up calling somebody in the city. I think it was the engineering department and said, hey, how about some dirt and some grass seed? It'd be really nice. And I want good dirt because what they piled on top wouldn't grow diddly squat, but weeds. If you dig up topsoil, you put topsoil back down. Once you get about four inches down, you're no longer into good soil. So my concern is installation of, you know, shoddy-ness of putting it in and running it to somebody's house without, if, if they do it correctly, I wouldn't see it. Shouldn't come out of the top of the box. So, you know, in less than a month, we'll be cutting grass, got a sharp blade.
Thank you, Glenn. Is there anybody else? Yes. Thank you, Glenn. Is there anybody else? Yes.
I'm Mary Lehman Yoder. I'm part of the Mill Ray's Cohousing. I'm here on behalf of my co-housing neighbors who have been conversant about this for quite a while. And just in the last few weeks have Frontier coming through. I, I'm, we're all grateful that um fiber optic is coming wider to the city. We already have it from New Paris. Our city council person here was very responsive to that, but there was nothing to do because. We have a system of competition, right? So more than one utility needs to be able to come through the easements, which we understand are not ours. But we said we don't want this. We already have it and. I find that problematic. I know the theory behind it. But I wonder about other neighborhoods where there will be potentially three fiber optic digs coming through. Um, in the name of competition and lower prices. Uh, I want to see it. I haven't found my experience with cable companies leads to long term, lower prices. Even though that's the argument that's given. What I do see, like many of the others who have spoken here, is that, yeah, our topsoil, our sod. Our bark mulch, our plantings, which are in the easement. I understand that you have every right to do this. But. The notion that when the utilities come in, things will be put back as they were. I would just rather be told. You know, that's a joke. It's not gonna happen. This is a larger good and we think it's good for the community, but expect that you will have a lot of cleanup to do. And things will not look like they did before. And um, that's the price you pay for this. That would feel more to me like on a speech about what it means to have the utilities come through than. Um, this will be increased competition, better, faster service, and you'll be so glad we came. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just a reminder as we could, no, you're fine. We appreciate it. And this wasn't just do this kind of a continuous thing. Make sure you kind of look at us and address us if you don't mind, please.
Yes, sir.
I'm Steve Minnick. I live on Third Street. And. Last week or the week before, I had the displeasures of the. Under, I put the pipe in for the fiber hit my water main. To my house. Special thanks to the water service department for working all night to restore my water. The company dug a deep hole beside my maple tree in the front yard, which is. It's on the easement. I realize that, but I didn't think they'd cut all the roots off the east side of the tree. Most of them off the. North side of the tree. I'm afraid the tree's gonna die. Who would take care of that? Probably won't get another maple tree back. There's a two inch gas main that they had exposed. They ducked that hole by hand. I'm sure they have strike marks on that gas line. Is there any way to get somebody to? Make sure that there's not long term damage to that?
Thank you. And I am writing down some of these questions live, but uh, hopefully Bodhi might address some of those or Dustin.
What was your address on Third Street? Well, maybe our forester could come out, look at that tree as well.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
I watched the crew putting it in. Hang their shovels on.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, Zach Bontrager, Goshen and the council's liaison to the Economic Development Commission. And I just wanted to say I was contacted by a couple people this week on the north side of Goshen. Who expressed to me concern that uh, this meeting might lead to cessation of services add. For them because they don't have options like uh Surf showed and they're fairly well done with um, construction and goes like they've said. The biggest lack of service that they have is on the north side and. People when Goshen would tell you that that's a longstanding issue in the city. And so I just wanted to express that to you and make it known that people, especially on the north side. Are uh nervous when they hear people are discussing this, that they are once again going to be forgotten in. The uh utility ad.
Zach, you did mention the Economic Development Commission, but I just want to clarify you're not speaking on behalf of that group, correct?
No.
Okay, thank you.
So that is the twenty minute mark. Um, do we have more people that wish to? It's like we have. Just a couple more. I counsel, we okay if a couple more? That'd be great.
So you're just saying just two more?
That's though it's only hands we saw. I mean, if there's maybe another one, maybe, but.
Thank you.
Yep.
I was looking down when they raised.
Sorry, sorry. I might have missed one too. So if there's another one, we're okay with that.
Josh Barba. Mine's really quick. Um, we hear about these companies talking about, you know, all the notices that they give. I've gotten a bulletin my, on my doorstep previously. It doesn't give you anything. All it's, all the fields are blank. Data completion, anticipated time, all that is blank. I myself have attempted to reach out to these companies and I have to do multiple follow up before I actually hear anything. So I mean, that'd be great to hear, you know, that they're being held accountable.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, I wasn't going to speak tonight as King listened, but the one question I guess that I have. Is we have many carriers that are coming through laying their own fiber. Normally, when a carrier comes through to lay their own fiber, fiber, it's because they want to add that particular asset to their own portfolio. So we've got so many. There's a lot of dark fiber right now that's being raised, not being used. Okay, so when they come in, they lay their fiber, fiber is about the thickness of a strand of hair. There's a lot of fibers in this bundle. And the carrier who owns that fiber isn't using the majority of it. It's dark. So my question is, has the council or I challenge the council to talk to these carriers who have already failed their assets? And find out. If it's possible for other carriers that come in after them instead of burying more and tearing up our yards more, why aren't we leasing this fair fiber?
Thank you. And I appreciate everybody that that spoke this evening. Um, just.
That was it. Is there anybody else? Yeah, I just wanted to make sure.
Okay. Yeah, we appreciate everybody that took the time to speak this evening and to the both Frontier and Surf for coming this evening to to talk with us. Um, just so the community knows, the public, uh, we want to continue being your advocates. So if you do call the uh, whatever company it is and it's working in our right of ways, whether it's NIPSCO or Frontier. Any of the companies that are out there, if you're having issues, uh, give Goson Engineering, give my office a call. We can definitely do our best to connect you with them and and push them to um, make things right if that's the issue. And um, to let everybody know too, uh, Goson Engineering received a contact earlier last week from AT&amp;T that they're planning on coming through Goshen next year. So. Um, this is going to continue happening. Um, we don't have the ability to force them to lease from each other. We don't have the ability to say we already have enough companies. Thank you. Um, but we will continue to work with them through the engineering department and other departments to um, uh, see what we can get. Uh, we're making a few changes in our street department um, with some of the leadership in that group. Um, so we're going to have a uh, instead of a just one second position, we're going to have two people uh, serving in the second position of the street department. One of the, one of those is going to be keeping a closer eye on our right of ways so that we can, we can see quicker ourselves what's going on. Um, to be able to react, um, not just with companies, but everything that's going on with our projects as well. So we, we're hoping that'll be a nice change for the city of Goshen. Uh, Bodhi, I don't want to put you on the spot, but one of the questions that came up tonight. Actually two of them, if you could. Um, uh, the public access uh, within an HOA. Uh, do they have to negotiate for that or or are they able to use just those right of ways uh, that we already, that the city has in those areas?
Or the easements?
Or easements? Correct.
Yeah, it's really going to depend on how the uh, plant was reported and what was in the plant.
You project a little more on.
So, yeah, I apologize, sir. What, what we can do is we can, um, if you want to leave your, we've got your name. Uh, we can contact you with some additional information to to help you. Uh, but we're, we're done with the public portion at this time. So I apologize. But we, we will um, make sure that somebody contacts you to to discuss that further. And then Dustin, if you would um, uh, just address uh, maybe what happens if if a company causes a tree to die and how, you know, if that's can be proven. And then also if um, what, what might happen if gas lines are hit, how NIPSCO interacts?
So I guess we'll start with a tree. Um. First, we'd have to identify what the utility company was, and if there's multiple utility companies, that may be a challenge. Um, the city does have a fifty fifty um, tree program, especially for the trees within the public right of way. So that probably is the likely. Activity associated with the tree.
So it'd be on the homeowner and the city, not, not necessarily the company that possibly.
Dies quickly.
Okay.
Usually if you cut off the roots, you know, it's going to take a couple of years before you're able to identify.
Okay.
Then it's hard to associate that with a contractor.
Please speak up.
Right, right away, if a right of way tree is cut down, is that required to be put back in is your question, I believe.
Not the forester, but I don't believe so. I, the goal though is to try to get trees put back in for the canopy goal. There's, there's nothing that I know of that is. Completely accurate with regard to that. So usually we have to go to subdivision plats as the primary uh, indication. And even with that, we typically look at and try to recover property irons to say, yeah, exactly. This is where. Right away.
And then it takes an actual survey for us to identify the exact spot, correct?
Correct. It goes everything from fifty feet to sixty to eighty two feet and a couple areas is a hundred feet. But somebody's really interested, um, Goson Engineering has a lot of the plats and Goson Plan has a lot of the plats in the city. Hire a survey if they think they've. Boundaries been crossed.
Thank you.
Should. They should. You asked about gas.
Yeah, gentleman just asked about a gas line that's been hit and dinged. Is that a danger? Um, at what point does NIPSCO get involved?
Well, yeah, so we just had a meeting last Friday with NIPSCO. Um, they also have concerns about the activity going on in the public right of way. Um, they're being hit. Um, and they actually, NIPSCO has more teeth than. The other utilities out there because they have the Indiana, Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission. Um, because of gas hits pose a greater hazard. And so there's fines typically associated with that. Um, and there's also training that the contractors have to go through uh, if they do hit a gas.
Okay, thank you. Well, I appreciate everybody taking the time to discuss this this evening. Um, if council doesn't have anything else, I think we can move on to our next one.
One last comment. Sharing your concerns regarding. A question for.
And I will share that um, the complaints that come into my office, we often to um, uh, help them and then suggest they also let uh Blake Doreo and and join a king in our area know uh, the same issues they're having. So, yeah.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just really briefly say something? Okay, um.
Uh, our clerk treasurer had real quick comments first.
Uh, that's Richard Gary clerk treasurer and just want to thank the mayor for quickly responding about this issue. And to Dustin for responding on this issue because. It was after taking minutes of many, many may council and border works meetings. Where the concerns of residents were being expressed about this issue. And on the, on a day that I received two announcements on my door that fiber optic was coming, coming. And although I know some of my neighbors are going to be very excited about that, others are going to be concerned about. The repeat work and the disruptions in the yard. That I suggested that it would be a good idea to have a forum like this and the mayor responded that same day as did Dustin. Who immediately initiated good contacts with the company. So. Appreciate them responding so quickly and for people to get a better idea of how this whole system works.
Thank you. And we're going to take a five minute break before we go into our next item.
We're not used to meetings this long. We haven't even started our meeting yet.
We're not used to meetings this long. We haven't even started our meeting yet.
Was that there be a sidewalk crossing in the crossing subdivision, and that's what this request is. The PUD did require sidewalks on both sides of all public streets. And so that's why this major change is needed, just to allow the sidewalk to be removed in the section after it crosses over.
Thank you, Rhonda. Are there any questions from council members? Questions from council members? Any questions from audience? Your name from the audience, back to the council?
Yeah, I did actually have. Well, right, and I can, and so I did have a call from one of the people who lives in the existing crossing subdivision about just to wanting to make sure the sidewalk crossing is designed safely and a concern with the speed of the traffic once Lighthouse Lane is connected. Those items really are part of the sidewalk design process, which will be reviewed as we review the subdivision.
Any other questions, comments from council? Are you prepared to vote?
We are.
We have a motion, a second to pass ordinance fifty one fifty two on first reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? And that passes, and let the record show Alberto Perez is not in the room yet. Did not vote, sorry. Go ahead and introduce second reading.
With clerk treasurer, please read ordinance fifty one fifty two by title only.
Ordinance fifty one fifty two, an ordinance to amend the Crossing Plan Unit Development PUD, ordinance forty four twenty six.
I move for the pass of ordinance fifty one fifty two on second and final reading.
Thinking about Councilman Nestle, second, final reading of the same ordinance. Are there any questions or comments from the council or the public? Hearing none, is the council prepared to vote?
We are.
We have a motion, a second to pass ordinance fifty one fifty two on second and final reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that passes unanimously. Thank you. Go on to the next resolution.
With clerk treasurer, please read resolution twenty twenty three dash oh six by title only.
Resolution twenty twenty three dash oh six, resolution of the common council of the city of Goshen, approving the order of the Goshen Plan Commission for creation of a new Ninth Street Corridor allocation area.
I move for the pass of resolution twenty twenty three dash oh six.
Second by councilwoman Icorn?
Yes, thank you.
And who's leading us off on Becky? So still use the microphone for the recording, but it just won't go on the speakers.
On February fourteenth, the Goshen Redevelopment Commission passed resolution oh three twenty twenty three, which was the first step in establishing the former Western Rubber property as its own allocation area to support the aerial cycle works project. This resolution removed that one parcel from the original solidated River Race US thirty three area. It designated it as its own application area to be known as the Ninth Street Corridor Allocation Area. And it added a list of new projects to the original plan, which is now considered the twenty twenty three plan. On February twenty first, the Goshen Plan Commission issued an order confirming that the amending declaratory resolution and the twenty twenty three plan conformed to with the city's comprehensive plan and approved the resolution. We're here tonight requesting that the city council adopt resolution twenty twenty three oh six, approving the order of the Goshen Plan Commission related to this new allocation area. If approved by the council, a public hearing will be held before the redevelopment commission next Tuesday, March fourteenth. And it will also take it towards a confirmatory resolution finalizing the establishment of the new area.
Thank you, Becky. Are there any questions from council members? Hearing none, are there any questions from the audience? Back to the council, are you prepared to vote?
We are.
We have a motion, a second to pass resolution twenty twenty three dash zero six. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and that passes unanimously. Go on to the next resolution.
Clerk treasurer, please read resolution twenty twenty three dash oh seven by title only.
Resolution twenty twenty three dash oh seven, resolution regarding the establishment of the Southeast Housing Tiff Allocation Area and the amendment to the Southeast Economic Development Area.
I move for the passage of resolution twenty twenty three dash oh seven.
Thinking about Councilman Icorn.
This resolution is being presented for approval tonight as the final step in the process of amending the Southeast Tiff to establish our first Southeast Housing Tiff Allocation Area. And it will be, it's our first residential Tiff in the city of Goshen. This amendment has been approved thus far by the Redevelopment Commission. The Goshen Plan Commission has gone before the school board. We've had a community meeting, and so we've gathered a lot of input on this. Approval of this tonight is the final step in this process.
Becky, any questions from the council members? Now, are there any questions from the audience? Back to the council, any further discussion? Are you prepared to vote?
We are ready to vote.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to pass resolution twenty twenty three dash zero seven. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Go on to the next ordinance.
With clerk treasurer, please read ordinance fifty one fifty one by title only.
Ordinance fifty one fifty one, amend two thousand twenty three compensation ordinance fifty one fifty three, fifty one thirty eight for civil city and utilities employees to add wage for special firefighter position.
I move for passage. I move for of ordinance fifty one fifty one on first reading, sorry.
Thinking about Councilman Nestle, this is our compensation ordinance for the civil city and utilities employees. We missed when we brought in our township fire department when we took that over. We also brought in the one employee that they had, Doug, who's now working with Goshen Fire. We created a position for special firefighter. We did everything we needed to. We forgot to put it in the ordinance when we passed it, so we missed that one. So we're, this is helping to correct that. And then since we were bringing this back, there were two things I meant to have the staff do this last round and completely forgot to, and that was to create two new pay grades. That'd be grade thirty four and thirty five. Bodie Stegelman, our city attorney, that position has been contracted for many, many years in Goshen. It's been a full-time city position for at least the last seven years now. I meant to make the request that we create a grade for Bodie Stegelman's position. So it's not just written down contractually, but it's also, it's an actual city position within our pay grades. Getting this done now helps us as we continue forward with this pay study, which is Baker Tilly is moving quickly along. It's taken a while, but they're now moving quickly along. And we are very hopeful we'll have that whole study done. Having this in place will help keep us from having to adjust it once we make our, once all that happens. So and then the other change I'm asking for this evening is to create the grade thirty four. Dustin Sealer, our director of public works is currently grade thirty three. His pay is at the top of that grade, so part of making sure that all of our pay grades are set the way they should be is we try to keep our employees kind of in that mid-range, so the midpoint. So by creating grade thirty four, we can actually have Dustin at the midpoint instead of the top of the pay grade. So it's just, it's all about resetting our pay grades. These last two pay grades, thirty four and thirty five, do not follow the normal pay schedule that the rest of the pay grades do. We didn't follow the same formula. To actually get Dustin where he'd need to be and Bodie where he'd need to be, we'd actually have to create five more pay grades to stay on that same kind of formula. But we would be creating a bunch of pay grades we have no intent of using, so we changed the formula for thirty four and thirty five.
Could you, just to confirm, currently Dustin is thirty three, but he's at the high point.
Correct.
And we're creating thirty four to put him at the midpoint.
Correct.
Which is equal.
That. Equal to.
The highest thirty three.
Yes.
Is equal to mid thirty four.
Yes, yes.
And then for Bodie, I looked back at the twenty twenty two. He's, where would Bodie fall in on the thirty five?
We took his pay, current pay.
Yeah.
We made that the midpoint for thirty five.
And is that, so is that where he will start at, is up the mid?
Yeah, nobody's pay is changing.
Okay.
This, it's just getting our ordinance to the.
Okay.
Where we need it to be, so nobody's pay is changing.
Thank you. That's the only thing I wasn't quite sure about.
Correct.
Perfect, thank you.
You're asking though.
When you said Dustin, I think I understand you, in essence, from thirty three to thirty four, you skipped a couple of pay grades by percentages, I guess, have increased, okay?
Yeah, and the way, the way, and I can't tell you the exact formula, the way the pay grades have been created to date is the midpoint to one pay grade, there's so much added to it. And it's a formula that creates what that pay range is for this next page. If we follow that formula, because of where Bodie and Dustin are at salary, that's where we'd have to create, I think it was five or six pay grades to get them to that point, to get them in the right point. And we'd be, we'd have four pay grades we were creating that we have no intent of using, so that's why we changed it.
And just out of curiosity, what would it take for either Dustin or Bodie to go from the mid of their particular grade to the maximum? Is it a longevity thing? Is it an experience thing?
Honestly, when in the pay grades with all city staff, it's up to that direct supervisor manager, department head. We give the raises each year that we all vote on, three percent, five percent, whatever it is. Everybody gets those. The pay grades allow you to, somebody is doing an exemplary job that allows those department heads to give them a little extra if appropriate, whether it's at the beginning of the year or the middle of the year.
Thank you.
And we would see that in the budget, probably, or we'd know about it in the budget.
Oh, yeah. We'd have the budget, that money to pay them, so.
So Dustin, you're not getting degraded by going from maximum to mid?
And Dustin, so you know too, as Baker Tilly, we want to get all this in place now because what they're gonna be doing is creating a new pay grade system for us. So we want to get, they're doing it off of what we have existing. So this helps that new pay grade system work out better.
Thank you.
We have not gotten a final date yet. Richard, have you heard a final date for the?
Okay.
Are they looking at like cities our size and what's, that's how this whole thing?
They're looking at cities our size, they're looking at industry that we compete with as well. So you're gonna have, I believe, comparisons of what we're paying to the industries that are out there. We're gonna have comparisons of what we're paying to the communities around us mainly, and also cities our size. So there's a few cities our size throughout the state we're compared to, but we're also asking them to compare us to Michawak, Alakar, which our community is much bigger than us, so it's just for our knowledge. Yeah. Yes, so they're doing that, that, those comparisons, they're also gonna be restructuring our pay grade for us. And they're also helping to either update or rewrite, if needed, all of our job descriptions so that we make sure our job descriptions actually reflect how the jobs have changed over all these years. So that, that's, it's a very intensive and large project, and that's one reason it's taking so long. We had some delays early on because people moved on, quit, whatever happened, and that somebody didn't realize that the project had halted, so. People with Baker Tilly, not the city. Any other questions on these, these pay grade, or these changes to our compensation ordinance? Any questions, comments from the audience on this ordinance? Back to the council, are you prepared to vote?
We are.
We have a motion, a second to pass ordinance fifty one fifty one on first reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, and that passes unanimously. Do we have unanimous consent to go to second reading?
We do.
Go ahead.
With clerk treasurer, please read ordinance fifty one fifty one by title only.
Ordinance fifty one fifty one, amend two thousand twenty three compensation ordinance fifty one thirty eight for civil city and utilities employees to add wage for special firefighter position.
I move for the passage of ordinance fifty one fifty one on second and final reading.
Thinking about Councilman Perez, second, final reading of the same ordinance. Is there any questions or comments from council members or audience? Hearing none, is the council prepared to vote?
We are.
We have a motion, a second to pass ordinance fifty one fifty one on second and final reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed, and that passes unanimously. Go on to the next ordinance.
Clerk treasurer, please read ordinance fifty one fifty three by title only.
Ordinance fifty one fifty three, additional appropriation.
I move for the passage of ordinance fifty one fifty three on first reading.
Second by Councilman Perez, this additional appropriation ordinance. These are additional appropriations, but it is no more money than we intended to spend this year in the departments this is going to. Every year with the, you know, depending on where we're at, fifty five, sixty, seventy million dollar city budget, there's always things we miss. So this is just cleaning up some things. We had created the additional position in the cemetery department, but the dollars were not itemized in the budget, so we're asking. but the dollars were not itemized in the budget, so we're, we're asking to put those in there now. So it's dollars we meant to spend. Nothing's changed outside of what, of that position. And then the retirement line and, and the mayor's office, that was also missed to add those, those dollars to that, that line. So are there any questions from council members?
Was that this year's budget or last year's expenditures?
So this is this year's budget and expenditures that we're talking, yeah, for this year. These are just lines that we didn't get bumped up to where they should be by mistake.
We're just doing it now instead of waiting till the end of the year.
Correct, yeah, just getting it out of the way. And as I said, this doesn't represent any, any additional expenses that we weren't planning on having for the city of Goshen. Any other questions, council? Any questions from audience members? Okay, hearing none, back to the council, are you prepared to vote?
We are.
We have a motion, a second to pass ordinance fifty-one fifty-three on first reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? And that passes. And this was advertised already, correct?
It was.
Okay, do we have unanimous consent to go to second reading?
We do. With the clerk treasurer, please read ordinance fifty-one fifty-three by title only.
Ordinance fifty-one fifty-three, additional appropriation.
I move with the passage of ordinance fifty-one fifty-three on second and final reading.
Second by Councilman Trock. This is second final reading of the same ordinance, same additional appropriations. Are there any questions or comments from the audience or the council? Hearing none, is the council prepared to vote?
We are.
We have a motion, a second to pass ordinance fifty-one fifty-three on second and final reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? And that passes unanimously. Thank you. Go on to the next resolution.
With the clerk treasurer, please read resolution twenty-two-three dash oh four by title only.
Resolution twenty-two-three dash oh four, inter local agreement with Alacar County for animal control services.
I move for the passage of resolution twenty-two-three dash oh four.
Thinking about Councilwoman Icorn, this is our yearly agreement with Alacar County for animal control services. I do apologize, I left my paperwork for this one and the next one in my office, so if you have any detailed questions, we'll have to ask staff. But this is our allotment, I believe it's around sixty, sixty-seven thousand dollars.
Eighty-five, four.
See, I forgot my papers. So, but this is our share for the, the services we receive and our participation. Are there any questions from council members?
There was no increase, remember that?
Right, yeah. Yeah, and this is based off of population formulas that they've developed for the county.
All right, Richard said there was no increase.
From last year.
Okay, that's what I was going to answer.
Okay. Okay, hearing nothing from council. Is there anybody has in, in the audience that wishes to speak on this resolution? Okay, back to the council, are you prepared to vote?
We are.
We have a motion, a second to pass resolution twenty-two-three dash zero four. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? And that passes unanimously. Go on to the last resolution.
With the clerk treasurer, please read resolution twenty-two-three dash oh five by title only.
Resolution twenty-two-three dash oh five, inter local agreement with Alacar County for municipal solid waste recycling station.
I move for the passage of resolution twenty-two-three dash oh five.
Thinking by Councilman Perez, this, in our local agreement is a new one for us, as the county has been pulling back from their recycle drop-off points that they've funded in the city of Goshen. The last one closes at the end of this month, which is behind Martin's supermarket. Dustin Saylor and our environmental department and several others have been working hard to get our environmental center or drop-off location for recycling set up. We're hoping to open that on April first. Alacar County has said they still want to participate in recycling. They closed theirs because these people started dumping everything at these sites. It became an enormous mess and very expensive for them to maintain. So they said they will not keep their sites open anymore, but they're offering the cities that want to participate with them the money that they did already spend in our community to help us with the cost. So as you can see, I believe it's five years there that's laid out of the money that they'll be turning over to us each year to help pay for the, the cost of, of picking up the recycling. We actually got very good bids in for this site. And it was Republic that won, is that correct? Yeah, Republic won the bids on this, and so we, we're, we're pretty excited to be able to move forward with this. As we've talked about this in Board of Works and other places, I'm reminding our community if you can't respect the rules and if people start dumping whatever they want at this site as well, we will be, have faced with the discussion with the council and city staff to decide if we're going to keep it open. We do have cameras at the site. We're going to have the rules clearly marked at the site in a couple different locations. We will have staff that's working with us checking it each day too, just to make sure that things are going well. The dumpster company, or Republic will also have access to those cameras online so that they can see when it needs to be emptied, so we're not spending money with them coming out just to check. So we believe we've got a really good system set up here. It's close to one of our other facilities, makes it very easy for staff to see if it's, if it's getting bad over there. And then we are also talking about moving one of our flock cameras to this location, so a car could, would not be able to get in and out without getting the license plate. That way, if we have somebody that dumps, we will be able to identify at least the car that, that did that dumping. I will be bringing another ordinance back to the city council in reference to this site and all of this legal department's working on, that will allow us to find somebody in the city of Goshen for dumping. And I'm going to be asking for that fine to be pretty hefty. I don't, we want to, want to offer this service and want to discourage those who want to abuse these and ruin it for everybody else from doing it, so we'll have more on that ordinance in the future. Well, we'll work all that out, you know, it depends. If you, if you come with a truckload, I'm going to tell staff there is no warning. We're going to have everything clearly marked. Now, if it's an accident that you threw the wrong, thought someone was recyclable, dumped a whole bunch of it there and found out it wasn't, that's different, but, yeah. From Alacar County. That will, the money they're giving us will pay for the tipping fees, the dump fees of the company coming to pick all this up. They also gave us fifty thousand dollars to the installation of our new area that we built. And I never heard the total amount, Dustin, and what we spent there. I know it was over fifty thousand.
So no specific staff time, like to help monitor it a little bit?
We think we've got the monitoring settled, so it's not going to take a lot of staff time. If we see a lot of dumping, that's where things start to change of having to get our staff out there to clean it up, to take it to our dumpsters, to have it all the way. Yeah. Dustin?
Yeah, so with the, the cameras we added, that kind of pushed me over, so we're about sixty-five thousand on that install.
Okay.
That's a lot to do with our special ops putting that in.
Yeah, and if you haven't been out there, it's, it's, they've done an excellent job of, of setting this, this system up, but it's, it's right in between one of our cemeteries, which we have staff stationed at, and our sewer treatment plant, which there's staff stationed at as well, so we're, we should have some good eyes on this, this location. But my understanding is, like, the first year's allotment is going to actually be more than what the bid was. My understanding is that they're going to allow us to carry those, so it'll actually end up funding more years than just what, what we're getting as these years go on. Is that correct, Bodie? Yes, thank you. We, I don't know about the management. That's going to be an unknown until we see how this all goes, but I can tell you that it does cover our tipping fees. I believe every year, the tipping fees were just under what the county is, is giving us. Any other questions from council members? Any other questions or comments from audience? Hearing none, back to the council, are you prepared to vote?
We are.
We have a motion, a second to pass resolution twenty-two-three dash zero five. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? And that passes unanimously. Thank you. That brings us to elected official reports. I don't have any reports this evening, but I do want to let everybody know that during this meeting, I was shooting some texts to I T to figure out what's going on with our speakers and told them, you know, if we need to set some speakers on the front wall here temporarily, let's get that done as soon as possible. Microphones are recording. For some reason, we can't get the, the volume up in the speakers without causing that backbeat. So we will try to get that done as soon as possible. And I think that clerk treasurer's also been working with the courts, getting all these microphones replaced with wireless mics. Mine's a freestanding one, so you'll be able to pull them right up to you instead of have them completely forward, so hopefully we'll within the next month here, we'll have this, this much better suited for the public meetings. Any reports from council members? Motion by Nestle adjourned, second by Shrock. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned, thank you.